Call this meeting order, Stewart City Council, ten eight of agenda, Monday, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, six P M, council takes. Call to order, Patrick.
Here.
Doley.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Kova.
Here.
Ranzolo.
Here.
Agenda approval, consent agenda approval, minutes of eleven.
So moved.
For alley one hundred block, Harland and Savarre property.
Yep, that's me. I got about two, two or three questions, it won't take that long. Mister Cook, you could probably answer this one. I don't have any years ago with them, but anyway, I was pretty well promised that the alley that we live on, there's only way to get into our houses is through that alley. I asked the council if they would make it a one-way alley going from the south to the north because it's the most dangerous thing you ever seen, trying to get out of that alley on Highway six. I was pretty well promised that that was gonna be taken care of. In the meantime, I've seen people in this town get a one-way alley with no heart headaches about it. In my opinion, Harland Street to me means nothing because we never use it. We always go in and out of the alley, that's the only way we can get in and out of our place. All three houses on that, it deserves to be considered a street rather than a damn alley. So do you have, can you answer my question? I've waited years to get an answer.
How many, Jim, I gotta ask you, how many one-way alleys do we have in town?
We have two.
One near the cup.
The other one is still considered one-way on the backside of the parking lot of the school, the playground. That is still classified as a one-way alley, it's never been reverted since the parking lot's no longer there.
Well, even your, even your people that was putting the pipe, new water lines in this town, got to the place, they would not even go out on that highway because you can't see. You pull ahead to see one-way, you gotta back up to see the other way. So I'm, I'm arguing, that needs to be a one-way street. And it was promised to us. This was years ago. If you don't believe, you look back in your minutes.
It's a different council, Doug.
Yeah, well, that's a different council, but you promised me that it was gonna be anything.
I can't, I can't make a promise and uphold it if I don't have a vote. These people have a vote, I do not have a vote.
You should have had a vote back then. Because it was really promised to us.
Apparently, the council didn't want it, if they didn't vote on it. Why can't you just back out and go to the north without a one-way?
Why, why do I have to back out and go to the north? Your, your people have worked on your lines all went the same way, they all went north too, so they decided it was too dangerous.
I don't know, with all due respect, I don't know if it's gonna make a huge difference if we make it a one-way through there. If you're saying that you're the only residents that's using that.
I'm not the only residents on that block.
Okay.
Not, not any more important than that street at either one.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I'm trying to talk here. But if there's only certain people that's using that alley, they know it's bad to the south, so.
There are not certain people using that alley.
I don't think the whole town is using the alley.
I want your people putting water line to use that alley constantly, day in, day in, day out.
Those guys are gone, that is put in the water lines.
Yeah.
So, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, I don't know if there's a lot of traffic using that alley to justify.
Well, I think, I think there is when it comes to lives, yeah.
And, and I won't disagree with that. I, we, I don't wanna see anybody get hurt either, that's not what I'm arguing. Maybe we, I don't know if there's something that we can kinda do, a study on, if we can watch that a little bit.
All you gotta do is come down and drive, drive through and try to get on Highway six from four to five o'clock in the morning, or anytime you want to.
Okay.
I'll guarantee ya, you'll have to back up twice because Landis has a big building there, and then on the other side, we have the big electrical unit sitting there on that side. So, I'm saying, I cannot believe that it has not been made.
Okay. I would like to drive down through there, because I haven't gone through that driveway and gone to the south, so that's something that I would like to revisit after we kinda check it out, I guess. I'm not, I'm not here to tell you no, I'm just saying that we, I think we can check it out and we can revisit this up there.
Mister, yeah.
Just, even making it a one-way, I don't think it's gonna matter, because there's multiple times where I went through the alley by the daycare in the cup, and I've almost been hit head-on. People don't pay attention, it's same with the school. There's people that drive their long way down those alleys, whether it says do not enter or not, so, I mean.
I agree.
What's it, we're looking at two, one side on each end of that alley, right?
Yeah.
In order to do that. Where do we, how do we push snow through that alley?
It goes both directions, because you always split an alley and take half of it each way.
Right, so are we, like, if the other two, I'm guessing the snow removal is exempt for this.
Correct. And it's normally done, you know, not heavily traffic, traffic at times.
Yeah. I'm with Cory, I think we look into this a little bit more, and we can revisit, we revisit it.
Sure.
Okay, my next question is, snow removal. The city of Stewart has not removed snow out of that alley since nineteen eighty-four, when I moved back over there. If they've been through that alley twice, I'll eat your hat. My question is, last year, my driver that can maintain it was told by somebody on the street commissioner that they could not push the snow across the road. I know that now, because we got a sidewalk, which is great, I don't, I don't mind that. What I wanna understand is, if I can't push it across the sidewalk, what are we gonna do with a six, seven, eight-foot snowstorm, when we don't have room in that alley to put? The city gonna come down and move the snow alley, so we can get in and out of that place?
Usually.
Or am I gonna have to continue to maintain it and pay for it to get the snow taken out there?
Usually, the city takes care of the alleys.
Yeah, I, I know better than that.
Well, I, I guess we'll have to agree to disagree, because I do know after the snow event, a day or two after, that's not their priority, but they do go down through the alleys.
You gotta remember, we gotta be out there before six o'clock in the morning.
Alright, okay. Is there a place in, in your property that your snow removal guy can push the snow up in your property?
The snow removal from the alley should not be dumped on people's property. You're supposed to have a lot, the right-of-way. They're supposed to be on each side of that alley, there's a right-of-way. So, why, why dump it on people's property? They're the ones that's gotta maintain and clean it up after, after years of having it dumped there.
Are you having your snow removal guy come through before the city comes through? Is that?
Oh, you darn right, he's there, he's there long before the city come through. I've never seen a city come through, so I don't know what time, but I'll guarantee ya, they're not there by six o'clock.
I mean, I can tell you, I used to live on a house that the only access I had was to use our alley. We had no other access to our property.
We don't either.
And, I mean, it's not right-of-way, because the city guys have to maintain our roads so that people, they can get through on the roads, but it's normally within a day that they come through and they hit those alleys.
If it's in a day, ma'am, how are we gonna get out of the alley if you have an eight-inch snowfall and a blizzard condition, and somebody's gotta be out of that alley before six o'clock in the morning?
I understand.
You expect us to wait a day and a half to have it opened up?
I completely understand, I did it for a long time, and.
Well, I've done it for, I've done it since eighty-four, so I know what I'm talking about, but I'd say, if I had to see the city come and remove it, I would be waiting probably to this day, yeah.
But respectfully, we have to have our streets cleared before our alleys.
That's, that's exactly right. My street is the alley, it's not Harland Street. So will you answer my question there?
The alleys come second, I mean, you have to have these main roads cleared for people to get through.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you on that. I'm arguing, where do you want me to put this snow? I'm not putting it on my property.
Jim, you got it.
When we plow alleys, they're split down the middle, we plow half of it to each side of the alley, which is technically the right-of-way. The alley is technically twenty feet wide, flatted, it's only about ten feet wide developed. So your right-of-way is there, and that's where we're putting the snow.
And same way with the streets.
Yes, we don't, we don't take the snow across the street. The snow is supposed to stay on the property it is originating from.
So you're telling me then that you're gonna come down and plow my alley before six o'clock in the morning?
No, sir, I'm not telling you that.
Henderson?
No, sir, I'm not telling you that.
You're the one who told my guy not pushing it down across the road, which I'll agree with you.
That's correct, I did.
But if you, if you're playing up the streets here in town, then my, my alley is my street, not Harland. That's what I'm arguing about, right there.
Well, the only suggestion that I can come up with, Mister Galiano, is that if you do hire somebody to clean out your driveway, so you can get out, per se, the alley as well, so you can get to the city streets, you can go down the, the alley and do exactly what Mister Henderson was saying, he can plow it on both sides to give you a path. If that's not acceptable, what your guy is doing, then when the city does come around, they can touch it up or do whatever they need to do.
Well, you know, basically, people, it, it would be different if the city had maintained the alley. The city's never paid, never had anything to do with it. I've been lucky if they put two inches of rock on it since nineteen eighty-four. So, don't, don't sit here and tell me what the city does to an alley, because I've seen nothing done to that alley.
Okay.
So, I, I'm not gonna stand there and argue with you, I'm just trying to get you to see that there is problem. That's the only way that your ambulance to get in on my place, the only place the fire department can get in there, we're ninety years old and older, don't tell me about that property down there, because I was born in that place, so I know what it's like. And every time I would come up here to you guys, I don't care who's been on the council, it's been nothing but a damn fight. You know what I mean? You're promised things, it's never carried through. You all sit there, you, you don't say a damn word, you, you, you make the person fight for every inch she gets out of this town.
I think.
It depends on who in the hell it is, that's the way I feel.
That's not enough, Doug, your curse.
Yeah, yeah, well, I've heard enough from you too, but you, you.
Just sit down, Doug.
You promise and don't say anything. No, I'm not gonna sit down.
I don't have a vote, I said.
I'm, I'm not gonna sit down, I'm gonna walk out of this place. And don't tell me to sit down.
One vote, three additions, please, for a pay estimate. You gonna talk on this, Cory?
Oh, we skipped number five.
Oh, wait, five, oh, traffic. Reha is health problems with the family, it's sick. He can't speak on, we had a meeting, Ash, myself, Sarah, and Chip was here, and Dave's head of the department, and we're basically turning it over to him, he's gonna have another meeting with them coming up, and they're fine-tuning things, but this is a long process, he'll possibly be six months down the road before things are done.
But everybody saw the email that we're not responsible for paying for concrete barriers removal or installation.
Yes. Not anything, okay. Okay, now we'll go to six.
Hi Forrest.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hey Forrest.
So two items on the agenda tonight, one is a pay estimate, it's just kind of a routine pay estimate, policy for work they did on the lift station, actually, it's work they did in the lift station in October and November, kind of combined, so recommend payment, payment estimate number six. Work is pretty much shut down for the winter, and we won't see any work really happen out there until, I guess.
No, go ahead and finish.
I was gonna say, that was anticipated schedule all along, contract beginning of the year, thought they could get the payment done before the cold weather set in, and they weren't able to do that, but that wasn't, wasn't anticipated they would get that done at the beginning.
Do you know where we stand for gates, did, was there ever a decision made to block that off?
So, I checked on the way in tonight, the, the end of northeast Second is blocked off, around, the gravel's in there for turning around, but I didn't see a block off, on, off of.
The highway?
The highway, so that still needs to be done, so.
But they're going to do that?
Yeah, they said they would, so I'll get, I checked on that tonight, so I'll get after them to get that, some kind of fence up across that, or a barricade or something.
Do we have signs that we can put up there, no trespassing, or do not enter, just something precautionary?
I probably have a do not enter sign, if they put a fence up there, we can put it on that, but.
Do I have just something precautionary that we at least warn somebody before they went around our gate and decided to do something stupid?
But, yeah, yeah, Jim's got something, we can put that on there.
Once they get the fence up.
Once they get the fence up, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we need a motion, day estimate.
I'll move that way, Doley.
I'll second that.
Michael Patrick, Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kova?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do you change orders?
So, change order, we gave you two options, so this is, primarily, this change order is to finish grading the park on the north side of Second. When we originally were gonna do the project, or we had an alternate to continue that loop all the way around the second, because of the cost, we took that part out, while we took the park out when we did that for the grading of the park. So, this is, the first one is adding in, grading the park, but deleting a five-foot sidewalk from the end of the cul-de-sac through the, deleting the sidewalk and grading the park, ends up being a deduct of twenty-two thousand dollars. However, what we want to do in talking to Steve and talking to Jim and Matt is, rather than a five-foot sidewalk, we actually wanna put an eight-foot wide trail in there, because this'll be city maintained, and Jim doesn't want to be shovel-in a five-foot wide sidewalk, he wants to take.
Oh, sure.
He wants to take, you know, his equipment.
Just like the rest of them.
And, and go down the eight-foot, but the price we got from the contract for Matt and it seemed pretty pricey, we think we might be able to get that cheaper later. The other is, we really don't need it until we get some homes built on the cul-de-sac, and we don't really know when that will be. So, the recommendation from myself, and from Matt, and from Jim, is to grade the, the park, delete the sidewalk, and then we'll go out for another contractor, see what they find for the trail.
I was gonna ask that, if we could maybe use local bidders or something for, for that, somebody local, you know, give them a local, local bid, but, yeah. Okay.
That's the second option in the packet. First option is with the eight-foot trail, and the second option is just the taking out the sidewalk. Yes, yeah, I can flip my description there, sorry, sorry about that. Yes, so we'd recommend a change order number two with a deduct of twenty-two thousand one hundred eighty dollars.
And, I know how you're gonna remove snow, so, is four inches gonna be?
No, no, we're gonna do.
We're gonna do the five.
We're gonna do five inches, they're gonna do it on a granular base.
Okay, 'cause I, I just wanna make sure we're not getting this deployed, so.
Right.
But, yeah, okay.
Need a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Patrick, second. Morgan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kova?
Just to be clear, I guess the motion didn't really specify, we're doing the change order to.
To the.
To the B, I believe it is, to the B?
Yes.
Okay, if that's for the motion, then we vote yes.
Okay, Ranzolo?
Yep.
And I got a question for Forrest, Jim, Dave. On the, near Dave's Street, the barricades used to be back, now they're close up, can a person turn around there, or where are you gonna move snow at, Jim?
They, they came back in and.
They, they did change.
A gravel turn around back in.
Okay.
Yeah, I went down there before the council meeting.
Okay.
I still think, yeah, I still think you need to probably do a three-point turn, but, depending on how it's going to be viewed.
Well, yeah, you're not gonna make, you're not gonna make a U-turn.
No, I just used Dave's.
That's not purpose.
And I think when, when they, when you guys do snow and stuff, it's still gonna be, I think, still gonna turn around on your driveway.
We're not, that is my concern, we're not, because I'm not turning a heavy truck around your driveway.
Just plow the snow so it goes on across the road.
Okay, so, I have a few different ones here, library board appointment I'd like to make is to Christie Russell with the council. Few different motions here.
Who's on our list?
I have applications.
I'm just more out of curiosity, because I couldn't tell you who's.
I can.
Yeah, that'd be great. I thought maybe we'd see something that I should have maybe asked about.
No, that's okay. So, we currently have Christie O'Brien, she covers rural Dager County, because we get money from, through townships. Rural Guthrie, we still have an opening. We have Christina Hutton, and Christina Hutton, oh my gosh, why can't I think of my people?
Well, regardless. It's, it's okay, I just.
It's something else.
So.
Christina, or Christie would be replacing Ken Bigsby. Yeah.
I just, I don't know Christie, is she related to you by any chance?
It's my wife.
Okay, okay, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I hardly know anybody in town anymore, except just the years ago, and everybody changes, so.
Yeah, our, our board was very much for Christie, because they've seen what she's done since she's moved to town. Yeah, a good person with a.
Unlike any board, there's probably an ideal number, right?
There's five, there's five, and we still need, with Christie, we would still need someone from rural Guthrie County, so.
Do we advertise to that at all?
My other person is Don Cape.
And it is on the list.
And it's on the list. Lynn moved.
Make a motion to the, Christie Russell.
Morgan, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan?
Kova?
Yes.
Ranzolo?
Yes.
Okay, and reappointment on the utility board, John Gabronson said he would do it, Kim Abey said she would do it, and Shirley Jones said she would do it, so I'd like to appoint those, reappoint those three with council group.
Make the motion to appoint John, Kim, and Shirley.
Are there other applicants or?
No, there's Cullen.
I just didn't know.
What's that, actions or what? Cullen Bebo's serving on the board, he, the mayor wanna be appointed. That John Gabronson, Kim Abey, and Shirley.
Can we do it one at a time?
I, I, well, I, there's no second motion, so.
I know, that's why I asked.
I'm just waiting to see if that happens, so.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna move for a second. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Can we have discussion before we do this?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask for that is because I, I would have liked to have done it one at a time myself, because there is one person on there that has attacked the council, and that's public, that's on the public, you know, called us conspirators to take over the, over the utility board, you know, and there's been several other actions undertaken by that individual that, in my view, doesn't make them fit. This is not, this is just not going off of hearsay, this is having lived through it, experienced it, so.
Do we have other applicants?
Time out.
We have a, we have a motion, and second, if we were voting.
Right, we're already in the middle of voting.
It seems so divisive, you know, and I just, I just wanna point that out, so, we have, we have a motion, we have a second.
I said, aye, go ahead.
Doley? Morgan? Kova?
No.
Ranzolo?
No.
Okay, so it didn't pass, okay, now, we'll do one at a time then.
Forrest, I, I, can you make, can you make the motion, or do?
Appointment, I have.
Oh, you're gonna do, okay, I get twice, you're saying. Okay, alright, go ahead.
So. I'll make appointment to Shirley Jones.
So moved.
Do we, what are the other applicants for this, or are we?
I got.
Is that go by you to?
I'll make appointment of Kim Abey.
So moved.
Ranzolo?
I'll second.
Sam McCob, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
He served. Yeah, we're, yeah, but, you want me?
Put you still under your appointment.
Okay, I'll say John Gabronson then.
So moved for John Gabronson?
Second. Motion, Dave. Okay, now the appointment.
Fill in.
Fill in, for Craig Russell, Neil Crawford, I'll make the appointment.
Second.
Move for second, that's fine. How do you vote for Patrick?
Yeah.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kova?
Yes.
Ranzolo?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I can make an appointment now, can I, to fill in? Yeah. I'll make appointment of Dan Sherman.
So moved.
Ranzolo?
I'll second.
Sam McCob, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kova?
Yes.
Ranzolo?
Yes.
Utilities, Phil? Eight, Guthrie County EMS, Mike, are you talking on this?
Yeah, I'll give a quick thank you. Anyway, after our last meeting, I took it upon myself to call the control, because I didn't know if anybody else had done that. I'd reached out to Penore, because they are, I believe, our only other paid EMS service in the county, I could be wrong, but I think they're the only ones that have paid EMS, to find out what their status was, where they were with this. And to my surprise, they are vehemently against giving up control of their EMS service, which I think if we had known at this meeting, when that was first presented, would have probably played a big role in our decision on having it forward. I talked to their city manager, excuse me, and they, they have a committee put together of a couple council members that are working, probably as we speak, of presenting documents to their council up there on how to work with the county. And they are very willing to share that information with us. I met with, I suppose, a mentor, a former council member, and kind of explained what was going on, and they suggested, you know, that maybe we form a, we form a committee. And they were so taken aback that we might even consider handing over control of our EMS to the county, that they went out on their own and got signatures from quite a few residents in Stewart, some former EMS people that rode with any on that, some former council people, some firefighters, well, I, that, they probably didn't do that, because you had your eyes open last time and seemed to be in support of handing over EMS.
Lots of road, yeah.
You know, so, it's, it's, that's probably why they didn't wanna do that, you know? I would, I would wanna work with people that would wanna keep control of our EMS here, and I think that's what a lot of people want, they don't want it to go, they don't want it to go away, you know? So, I am looking, right now, here's what I wrote up, I'm just making the motion now, a move that I form a council committee to work directly with Penore's EMS, surrounding councils for the purpose of developing ideas to promote better coverage, while keeping Stewart's EMS service locally controlled, the committee will report back to the full council on the month basis.
So why does that committee have to work with Panora's EMS? We have EMS here. Why wouldn't they want to work with our hometown?
Well, go ahead.
I, I would just like to ask for that committee council that the EMS director and the fire chief also work with them. So it's a joint effort.
Right, and I'm not opposed to that, just because.
Just so that way, everybody's covered, everybody's, you know, everybody's talking on the same page. We're not excluding anybody.
Right, and that's fine. I can, I, I am open to that amendment that we would put in the EMS and whether it be the director or assistant director, whoever wants to be participating, their fire chief, uh, and, you know.
That way you're covered, you have all, everybody's talking the same language, everybody's, I don't think it's, it doesn't sound like it's meant to, to go one way or another. It, it sounds like it's meant to just have some, have a voice for our town that's going to work with everybody else. So that way. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's meant to like say no or say yes, but to, to do align with Panora. So Panora's got their little committee, we've got ours, and then everybody can work together and everybody's informed, is what it sounds like. I don't know.
But the thing with this, there's already a committee in Guthrie County. They're already, you can go to the table and discuss that. Without all these little subcommittees, that's the thing.
It's not town specific.
I understand that, but if you want to work and share your voice, go to the meeting.
We'll still go to meetings. We'll still go to those meetings, but I think it needs to be elevated to a council level. Uh, there were some informations up here.
Well, I think we had made a decision and then we went back.
I'm not saying you're following, you're, you're, you're reading too much into it. Was this too far, my community? Let me finish.
You're wrong.
Not wrong, but don't ever tell me I'm wrong. Don't ever tell me I'm wrong.
All right, that's it, that's it.
No, not me. You get, he's interfering with, with my discussion.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay? Jeez. We are forming a committee to go up there and find out what they did, what the proposal is, okay? That's what we're gonna do. We can bring that back, we can discuss it.
The way it's over too.
Okay?
Sure.
And then mine might work.
Well, you're trying to tell me how I was wrong and no, I'm not wrong. So I voiced my opinion. All I'm saying is we can go to the meeting. I'm not, I'm not against you. Don't take it like I'm attacking you. I'm not against anything. If we do it, fine. If we don't do it, that's fine too. But it just, I think what you said, I don't care who goes. I just think we need to be involved in the panel that's already set. Voice our concerns and our opinions up there. That's, they've asked us to do that. We're the ones sitting here fighting them and saying, no, we don't want to do that. Now we're going to form a committee. It doesn't make sense to me.
No, we're going to form a committee to do that as a council level instead of just having the EMS director go.
Department heads can do that for us. It's the chain of command, again, form a committee. When we have department heads that can do this stuff, we have to trust the process and let it flow. That's where I'm at.
Can I?
Go ahead, Christie.
Respectfully, I think that if that was the case, and I'm not trying to argue, but if that was the case, that would have been happening a year ago when this first started. So respectfully, I don't think it was happening because I don't think the communication was with the fire chief. I don't think Sean was relaying the information like he should have to us or, but that's neither here nor there. That's, I'm not arguing about it. I would like to second Mr. Kova's motion with the addition of the EMS director and the fire chief being involved with those council members to just have our city protected, just in conversation and whatever that is. I, I will second that motion with the addition of the EMS director and the fire chief being part of that committee.
I mean, I just, can I?
Come on the mic.
No.
I.
No, I understand this, but you just cut Mike off not too long ago because there was a motion and a second and he wasn't able to finish his discussion. There's a motion and a second.
We do have a director here and he's not involved.
That committee was started because when they went to Panora in a publicly available meeting, they had that discussion. And then when you guys had that discussion, that was information that was, uh, out there. Nobody didn't tell you that. We didn't think it was important. Uh, some of the big thing that this sends a message that says, oh, look, we're ready to just do whatever Panora wants to do. Like, and, and I respect your guys' autonomy to say, we want to know more, and that's fine. But like Corey said, go to the meetings, look at the minutes. There was nothing to report a year ago because the EMS committee wasn't even formed. That didn't even happen until January. So, you know what I mean? And so then we had to spend at least three to six months getting enough information to bring to you guys. You guys say yes or no to a contract. The rest of this is just micromanaging what we're doing. You know what I mean? And I'm not saying that you guys shouldn't know. That's fine. Get as much information as you can. But, you know, the rest of it is just, I don't understand the point of the committee and, you know, what are, what is the committee accomplishing up in Panora? Are they doing anything? Like, what is?
That's what we're going to go and find out. That's what I just said. They are working on a proposal presented to their council tonight regarding their EMS and Guthrie County. Okay, so I think it would behoove us to go see what they're doing since, again, I believe you could probably answer this. They're the only other paid paramedic service in the county.
Yeah, that's true.
So I think it would behoove us to go ask them what they're doing because they do not want to relinquish control of their EMS. I was told that as much through their city manager. So I don't see the issue of forming a committee. We're not going to make any decisions. We're not, we're just going to gather information. But I think at this point, it needs to be what was, why do we?
That's just my opinion.
We haven't been getting this for the last six months. That's the issue. We're not getting straight information.
There's, again, there wasn't a lot of information to get, you guys. Second of all, it's, I mean, it's.
I'm not gonna, we've rehashed this.
There, there's no information to give. And, and I'm not throwing Ash under the bus, but Ash told Sean there's no information to give to the city council. Ash asks for information from Sean, just like the chain of command. There's no information. Ash is like, I can't present this to that city council with no information. Am I wrong, Ash?
No, you're not.
Mayor Brian had his hand up. Did you have your hand up on purpose?
Yeah, I just.
You want to come out?
Come out, Brian. So do you think we have the presentation put together by the?
You know, I wish I did, but if you, uh.
Can I see it just for a second? So to me, my concern is the local control. Um, that's it. It's local control. Panora's maintaining local control. Lisa up there is all we could, you know, even consider.
I mean, and that's the point.
I'm not here to debate. I just. Okay, so everybody's aware of it.
Small sample.
So one of, this is like the timeline part of it, if that's what you're looking for. And then year five to 10. Oh, that would probably been on a, uh. And these were just.
Years five to 10 reassess number of on-duty ambulances and placements. They're up to best support county needs. Are they going to sign a hundred-year, twenty-year agreement to keep a, a rescue unit here? I'm just saying. It's, the only thing I care about is, is that we have coverage here.
And, and that's what they said. When I was at that last meeting, they are not going to pull any ambulances from Stewart because of the interest.
But you just heard, you just heard the mayor talk about it last time with Galliana. You can't tie one council to the next. So whatever's in a contract, why is Panora proactively protecting their rescue unit to maintain local control?
There's no contract to go for that, Brian.
I know, but Panora is proactively dealing with this. They're proactively marking out their territory and doing the same thing.
Oh, okay. Quit interrupting me. But, uh, but there's no, they haven't proposed anything to us. They haven't brought us a contract and said, here, sign on the other line. They don't.
Okay, so then why would we want to discuss it if there's no math behind what they're going to put together and they've been at this for a year? And this isn't in any public newspaper, Facebook? No, no.
No, I, I agree. I'm not going to disagree with you on that.
It's just like, how can you even consider this? I'm just asking. So. So, so again, going back to the committee, proactively, what Lisa did, it, or was put two council members and herself on this committee to understand what's going on.
Right.
So what's wrong?
It shouldn't be, it's not really a funny matter because, uh, when, when people talk about, you know, possibly, even the possibility of turning control, right? You got, is there an issue? But, I mean, are you, are you, are you for giving the EMS to Guthrie County tomorrow?
No, but.
Can we move on with the vote? This is getting out of hand.
I was gonna say, yeah, you need to vote on that.
I'm open. So I'd like to know where that, where that number comes from.
This is getting out of hand. I'd like to call it to order and call for.
But hold on, where'd that number come from? Because it wasn't in the proposal. I don't under, where are we going to save one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Because that's what we spent on the ambulance now.
Okay, we spent four hundred thousand on the police, okay? So we should turn that over to the county? No. We want that service. It's the same thing with rescues. It's a bill into a fifteen-dollar levy. Why are we going to double taxes for EMS by turning it over to the county?
I don't know, Brian.
Well, you just said you're gonna save one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
We have no paperwork. We have no information.
Okay, but you just said you're gonna save, then you can't back it up.
I mean, we could.
Okay, Mike, I got a question. You want this committee? Who do you want?
Well, I was gonna ask Dave or James. Dave's the night guy. I don't know which I would want. And then you're gonna have to fire EMS people on there and maybe somebody from the community.
I mean, I think Ash and Dave, you're the money guy. Mike, fire chief, EMS director, you're covered.
So we have a motion second. How do you vote, Patrick?
Nope.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yeah.
Kova?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes. Can we take a breather?
Yeah, we only got.
Okay.
Stu Econom, you got it?
Organization, a couple people joined together, joined forces. Group called Locable and Downtown Redevelopment. You know, as they offer a program where they come through and assess the community's downtown area. They help out with obtaining a grant, uh, grants for twelve thousand five hundred through USDA. If the grant is approved, that provides the funding for their services. That involves a real estate development plan, comprehensive document, current conditions, outline, gaps, programming of curated downtown through a detailed onsite assessment. Communities receive actionable plans with recommendations of their real estate process, uh, downtown real estate process. And then they come up with a couple of renderings. It's free to the city. Just, uh, they'll give some consulting advice on some ideas for the downtown area, on ways to improve things. Generally, they ask for a letter of support, the, the grant will ask for letters from mayor and city council and/or. So I'm just asking for approval to proceed with it.
Warren? I'm going to suggest that you table this. Seed's also considering a proposal from another consulting group involving city planning, and we're also doing community visioning through Iowa State. So, um, I think Matt's mainly making you aware of this opportunity, but, um, maybe Seed should weigh the different proposals and, and we could make a recommendation to the city council, whether it go with this outfit or, or a different one.
Thank you, all right, sir. Well, I don't think we can just table it based on somebody from the audience saying we should table it, should we?
The mayor recognized me, so I get to do that.
Well, you talk about, I mean, should we make a motion to table? I will make a motion that we table that, uh, until Seed finds those things out. I don't know. Is that proper? That's proper. We don't know what's.
It's just a suggestion.
So, so we can have it reviewed by Seed. Opportunity to table it.
We're gonna, I mean, we made a motion to officially table it.
So how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Kova? Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Okay, B.
Next is, uh, seeing, June twelfth of this year, city council approved tax increment financing assistance to the company that supported the efforts to complete the True Value project.
We don't. Are you talking to B? B, mowing?
Seed, mowing?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm asking for reimbursement for the lawn mowing. The information should be in your package there. Uh, that's, uh, basically, Seed manages the housing development. Uh, those are funds that, for mowing. The, the, those are funds that Seed doesn't receive. And every year, come and ask for reimbursement.
And every year for the past two years, you say, yes, we're gonna reimburse, but this will be the last time. You said that for the last two years.
Well, back in twenty, yeah, back in twenty twenty-one, we, we did the thirty-three hundred as contingency and that Seed was supposed to be responsible from that time forward. And we did, yeah.
We done again.
There you go again.
Yeah. And said the exact same thing. Let's see, we're gonna be responsible for this issue in the future. And here we are again.
I mean, not only is there a standout, you expect me to pay for that?
Warren?
Yeah, I just, in our self-confidence, I was at the meeting a year ago, not, I can't say when it was, two years ago. And you said, you're not gonna ask for assistance again. And either manner, I said, we can't promise that. We offer these lots for free. The one thing I, I wish I didn't see it until earlier today, but, um, there was a contingency that, that we used that was part of the financing. The money was borrowed for the All Saints edition. I should probably stand up. There was a contingency that was set aside for, uh, additional expenses when the TIF money was borrowed to do the All Saints edition. And we paid for the last two mowings out of that contingency. I think there's still none left. There's not many lots left. Uh, I don't expect there to be any mowing, I hope, on All Saints edition next year. But we offer these slots for free. We didn't say any money aside for, for mowing. Now, because you made an issue about this, we did include it in the financing for phase four, correct, Forrest?
Oh, yeah, that's correct.
Yes. So, so we do have money that, that we borrowed. This, this was not earmarked because, you know, there were a lot of line items and we would get the cost estimates and change orders for, for All Saints. Because the other choice would be for us to try to anticipate what our, you know, we're, Seed's kind of doing this on a volunteer basis. And pitching in, you know, we get a lot, got a lot of free contractor advice from Kevin Sargent and Eric Chairman. Uh, if, if we're gonna have to pay for mowing as part of being the developer for these housing issues, then we would have incorporate that cost in the lot. It wouldn't be a lot, but we could no longer say we're giving you free lots as an incentive to come and build in Stewart. So that's why we're asking for the mowing. I mean, if you don't, if you tell us you're not, you're not gonna pay for it, we'll figure out a way to pay for it.
Ash, he mentioned that there might be some sort of contingency left. Do you know if there is or is there?
No, we, the safe out is cool.
Oh, used to them. That's right. I forgot about that. So.
No, that's okay. You, you.
That's, that's why you hired Ash to keep. So anyway, I just wanted to add that for context.
But, uh, what they can call this time is not significant, you know, and then since, uh, say, certain times are strong because we have the, the new finance included there. So practically, this will be the last year. As for, because, well, that's what I'm hearing from, from the last year.
The last time for this year.
That's right.
You're not, so those one-time disbursements were just one time that year. So we could do it two times in a year, so.
Do we know what, so are we earmarked, we earmarked money?
Yes.
For the next development, formal?
We did.
This is a, a line item that when, uh, Forrest gives us a line item, we. This is a line item that when, uh, Forrest gives us a line item and everything that the housing development's gonna cost, nobody thought to ask, hey, can we get some funds put aside for mowing? This housing development is a city project.
Then why isn't the city mowing it?
Because it's managed by Seed.
I was just trying to be prudent.
No, I was, I was just asking.
So it's managed by Seed, but you want us to pay for it?
So when it, I mean, you're the employer, you're the main, the, the main client. But when this started, I mean, we've been, how many years ago, right?
Five, six years.
How, how was that originally agreed upon?
The first year went so fast, we didn't have to pay for any mowing.
Okay.
This is the first time we had to hire Schwinger to.
It just wasn't thought of.
Right.
It just wasn't thought of.
It was because of the houses went so fast and were developed so fast, it didn't leave room for grass to grow.
So we managed to make it with those couple of years, hoping that the contingency, but unfortunately, we had another project that carried out the contingency. So, uh, like I was trying to explain, you know, I am not taking this side because I hate to waste money, as you know. But it's, if it's the last segment of this.
Yeah.
Dialogue of mowing, we can make it possible, because not a lot of money. But from next year on, next project, we have money included in the budget. And I am aware of that, to be going through the mowing. So if we get the commitment now from the two main guys here, Matt and Warren, that next year, we're all gonna talk about it. I would, the commitment, the kind.
I guess Matt and I will take our lawn mowers out.
Well, just.
Forrest, do you know in that new, does it taper off with the build-out? Like, how we project the build-out? Does it take away that match every year or do we get the exact same? Have we accounted for the exact same cost to mow eighty percent of the lots?
We, we just kind of picked a mowing number and.
Okay.
Threw it in there and.
Okay. So this, this could still happen.
Well, there is still a contingency, yes. And there is a contingency in mowing.
Things that we do.
So I, I mean, do we need to be proactive on this and say, hey, from now on, Seed's, this isn't even gonna be a Seed thing. If we mow lots and we pay someone to do it, the city takes on that, so we don't have, and four councils from now look back and we have the exact same thing written in.
Right.
What Seed is gonna do this next year. We just, we just take it on.
Yeah.
Because, I mean.
Well, I, I'm gonna leave it up to you. I've, I've been fair to Seed and to the council. You know, we have.
You want the city to start mowing all of it?
Uh, no, I'm saying this, it's just going to be, those costs are going to be the city's responsibility instead of Seed. So we don't have this discussion every single time.
So instead of Seed getting the bill, we're getting the bill on Saturday.
I'm not saying the city mows it. I'm saying they're gonna have to take that bill instead of it going to Seed, instead of it coming. I, I'm, I'm just trying to, why we can have the same thing every single time?
No, it's kind of, uh, Warren, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, Seed actually owns the lots until we either give them.
You're getting the bill, no matter what.
We're getting the bill. And, and there's precedent for us. You, you have a, you give us money so that we can make sure that the, the soccer fields are mowed and purloined.
But wouldn't it come to the council as a, just like Forrest presents?
Like a change order?
Like a pay, you know, a pay estimate? Here's your, just like a line item that we pay, that we pay for every other contractor.
Well, we, we could do it that way. Might be more complicated. I mean, at least this way, I mean, we just told John Schwinger to mow like the east mowing.
I guess I just, every time I look at this, I'm like, oh, they deserve to pay, you know, like Seed. It's like, well, no, we do this every year.
Right, we could probably do change orders, but then they're gonna be paying the attorney fees to process a change order.
We keep telling them that they're going to pay, but then we keep acting as.
It's not really a, it's a one-time. If it's a line item, it's just a pay estimate.
If we just don't say it's a one-time payment, we just say, we're gonna pay him, just pay him. And then.
We're discussing that shit.
Yeah, we'll see. Yeah, then we'll, we'll see what happens, you know?
So you can either say no and at the end of it, you know, we'll figure out something out.
So, does Seed not have any funds to pay for this at all?
Well, we've got the funds that you give us every year to be a, uh, economic development engine for the group. Part of it we pay back to rent for the depot. The rest we use for things like the soccer fields.
Oh, that's fine. I have to be fair to who decided that. Seed is helping the city and so, all this stuff. So they are partners with the city. They not really, uh, just come to put it on the show of the city. And we do respect what you do and appreciate what the seed do, you know, kind of.
For sure.
So we just, the discussion doesn't mean that we're trying to pass things to you or you pass it to us. It's just a discussion. So next year, hopefully we'll be around to discuss it again. So, yeah, if you'd like to make a motion to pay.
Or I think they.
I'll, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to pay for the Schwinger bill of seventeen forty.
That's, that's an entire year.
I understand, we didn't have many lots.
Let's second it.
Let's second it.
Patrick, I gotta move in a second. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Calvo?
Yep.
Renzo?
Yep.
And Forrest, I want to report to you, we need arrows pumped to the new sidewalk. I see the high school kids walking on the road. So there's a sidewalk there, guys.
Of course.
Okay. Say.
Okay, uh, this is regarding Jeff, Mike, Angelo, Bert have a tip application to, for the True Value project. Uh, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, city council approved tax increment financing assistance to the company to support the efforts to complete the True Value project.
We include it in the main over in the luxury area. So it's ready to go. We have an app from, uh, set to build.
Jeff, Jeff, Mike and Angelo.
Jeff. Uh, to buy the property and take over that, from the, to see how it's housing.
So this is similar to what we were looking at doing for Dudley's.
Yes.
When we put them into the token agreement.
Yes.
But isn't it so high because the building price, the building owner is charging such a high price?
There's, yeah, we, we can't, yeah.
I mean, that's part of it. But if we want to keep a hardware store and.
Yeah, it's, it's, that store's been open for decades as far as I, you know, it's been open since I've been here. And if you think about it, closing, which the word is that it is getting ready to close.
Yeah.
Um, in the near future, think about all the other business that can be taken out of the downtown with not having people come to that. And they got a good, they got a good store there looking, making it a farm and, well, Jeff, maybe a farm and country type thing.
Farm and, farm and acreage?
Acreage stuff over there. Um, um, I just think it would be a shame to see the building closed and who knows how long it would be closed for. Or, you know, especially if we got somebody that's interested and, and capable of, of running it. Because they got a pretty good business where they're at.
Chip's on that list, too.
Uh, Chip's, yes, I will, yes. Been talking to Chip about it.
What do you need from us, Matt?
Uh, approval to go forward.
And that would be something, because, uh, purchase agreement.
And I think, I think also on this, we are going to look, um, and throw it out there and let, let them discuss, let the other, let Bond and Chip and everybody discuss the possibility of, and the availability of white funds for them also.
Yeah, that's a good idea. If the bond that Colonel allows that, that would be a good idea.
Right.
Uh, we just wanna make sure that there is a purchase agreement.
Right, this would be all subject to that.
Yeah.
The Florida.
I think we've got some.
Warren?
My only concern is, uh, this, this hasn't gone past Seed, um, and it's an incomplete application. I mean, it's really incomplete. That there's, there's no scope of work, that, that there's not the stuff that the bond councils need in order to make a development agreement. The, uh, the ending property tax number is not correct. If, if they get three hundred thousand dollars worth, the current taxable valuation is two sixty-nine, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-nine and change. And then they've got the ending property five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It just goes from two sixty to three hundred, they're only gonna get forty thousand of tip financing. And the city council's already indicated support for this project back in June. That was part of that package of projects that we sent to bond council for our, our TIP funding for the year. I think the, you, you need a scope of project, you know? This is what the money's gonna be spent on. We're not just gonna hand you a, a bag of three hundred thousand dollars to go do what the money you like.
Did you go over this with them, Matt? So that stuff?
Uh, oh, over the application?
Yeah.
So.
It was just dated last Thursday, so I don't think so.
So there's still some issues. Uh, a purchase agreement is still needed. Items that we need to be filled in on there. And I put it before the, I'd like to put it before the Seed meeting, uh, next, not this coming Thursday, but next Thursday. Get a Seed an opportunity to review it.
So this basically, if, if, if we were to do this, it wouldn't go to the bond council or Chip or anything before we had a signed purchase agreement and everything done. It'd be contingent upon referring it to Bond, Chip.
And Seed.
Yeah, yeah.
And Seed.
So the reason it's before you now is, well, it'd be nice, it'd be really sweet if I could have things go before Seed first, but your meeting is first.
Right.
And, uh, the, uh, current owner has filed for liquidation.
Yeah.
Someone understand? So.
Liquidation as in bankruptcy?
Yes, that's what I understand. Yes, so, um, trying to brought it before you now so that we can try to be.
Proactive?
Proactive, you know, a couple of weeks early. Like I said, that, you know, an ideal situation, I'd rather it be before Seed first, but.
Fair.
This is where we are.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead with what you just said. Contingent on.
Seed.
Purchase agreement. And then.
Complete application.
Complete, finish up the completed application and then send it to the bond council.
Okay.
Can I add that? Do we need to have them there? Because I did mention, uh, to have them ask about the availability of white funds to.
Yes, that too.
So add that in there.
Second to you. How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff.
Public forum, real quick, Jim, can you say what alleys are paved in the town?
Alley come about being paved. There are two alleys that are paved, and that would be the left miss church alley. And it'd also be the alley behind the sports cops apartments. Both of those were done by a cost share of residents enjoying that alley.
Okay, thank you. Public forum? Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I say something? Okay, um, I guess barring any special meetings, I think tonight is Christina's last night.
Sure is.
And, uh, I, I would just like to say, it, it's been, uh, really a privilege to serve with you. Um, I know we've let it hedge, we haven't agreed on anything, but I think that's what makes for a strong council. You can have a lot of discussion. Uh, I think what also makes for a strong council is the ability to speak up. And, uh, I know sometimes that ruffles a lot of feathers, you know? Uh, I think we need more scrutiny instead of a lot of just, yes, this is the way we're gonna do it. I think, uh, I, you took that on pretty fearlessly.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Um, again, you know, I said, I know we didn't agree on everything, but, uh, I hope we can continue that moving forward with the new council. Uh, uh, keep this stuff done in the best interest of the city. Uh, and I, I for one, thank you for your service.
Thank you. As the city administrator, I had the pleasure to vote for you for forty years. Thank you for everything you've seen and done well and, and talking to my, yeah, the mayor, council members. Thank you so much and, uh, you still around? You were on the fire.
No, I'm not on the fire.